One is really about how we organize the adults in the school and then one is about how we support our students. So we're gonna start with the building assets part. We do that at the high school in something that's called I time. So what I time is, and this is again, this is a refresher for those who've been on the board for a while, but what I time is, is a social emotional curriculum that is going to be done for our ninth grade students. And that happens every single week. So what this is, is and teachers have expressed, I put a quotation on there because a teacher said it very well, is that it's a chance to take your content hat off and just care about kids. And I've really kind of was struck by the Maya Angelou quote of people will forget what you said. People forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. And as we've been surveying our students and as we know especially, this has been key during the pandemic. Kids need to feel connected, they need to feel seen and they need to feel valued in their space before they're in a place where they can learn. So this is all about asset building. So what might this look like? It's weekly lessons, the teams of teachers trade off when they do them. And it really is all about skill building. So that can be goal setting. There are lessons about leadership, there's lessons about empathy, community building, grief, loss, determining strengths. A whole number of different things, but it's really, I think one thing I'd like to highlight is a teacher just told me the other week that doing I time lessons is not a, it's not a great amount of time taken away from their content. You know, for one teacher, it's really only a half hour a month that they're doing it. But the aggregate of a student in ninth grade getting it every single week by different teachers. All of a sudden you start feeling this, you're building this community, you're building this, these strengths. And that's really quite transformative for them. But a teacher shared, they said, I times is really makes me remember why I wanted to become a teacher in the first place. And I thought that that was a really neat way to say that. So that's the BA part of BAR, the building assets. So how do we help students gain those skills? Now, kind of the other side of things, and this is where make learning difficult for them for many times reasons that are not their fault. So this is about how can we as a staff be able to help them out? We do this in three ways at the high school. We do this with small block meetings, big block and sure. Pause for effect. How's that? Is that a little bit better? So far. Example of what that might look like, I'll give you a concrete example. So each week, our ninth grade students are put together onto a team that share a common language arts teacher, a common social studies and a common science teacher. And they meet weekly, very similar to what a lot of middle school models have done for many, many years. But this is a new thing to high schools. So what we'll do is our teams of teachers will meet and they'll discuss students that they perceive as struggling for one reason or another. And really how we can help them. Students will, you know, many times though, those level one interventions to help a student, maybe a student is arriving to third period class consistently late. Teachers are able to partner together to find a way to help that student overcome that one hurdle and then they're on their way. So as we know, sometimes students continuously have some struggles and so those go to a next meeting, which we call BIG. And in that meeting, we expand the amount of staff that are there to support. So now we include their school counselors, we in school, maybe a reading specialist. Excuse me, and anybody who needs to we've brought in parents, we've brought in case managers, people that can expand some of that information. Obviously for some students, the risk continues and so that goes to our, really our big kind of our final, we call it community connect or risk review. SAT, and this is really your team with Bing Resource. Their word. Anyway, I'll give you one concrete example. We had a student that joined White Bear Lake North Campus about maybe six weeks ago, who was new to our district. We didn't know much about them, we didn't have a lot of records about them, they kind of just showed up. And in the second week of that student being in our school, so I think a total of seven days. Their team met together and the language arts teacher said, has anybody noticed that this student had seems to not be finishing problems on their assignment? They kind of only, they skipped some or they only answer half the question. Just a very common, you know, anecdote that they've noticed. Well, the science teacher piped in and said, you know what, I just spoke with mom. And she said that this student has struggled with reading textbooks for many, many years. All these things. And then because we were having a team meeting, we said, you know, I wonder if there's a literacy concern or something that we could offer as new supports. So our reading specialist was able to kind of do an assessment and low and behold, we find they have a very, very low reading score. This student had been placed in all honors classes in our system. So within, we did the assessment, we communicated with family. And then we were able to change their schedule because they just joined our school so that they were in appropriate level classes. I'm happy to say that that student has straight A's right now in their class. Now, what you'll notice what just happened is that that student, one parent, or excuse me, one staff member was able to talk to a parent. And that information from that parent, every teacher in that kid's schedule now had that information like that. And so that kid, we didn't have to wait for them to fail enough for us to notice that they're struggling. We were able to rapidly be able to give them the support that they needed in a timely manner. So that's what the power of BAR does in our weekly schedule is how can we as the adults organize ourselves to be able to support students quickly? So I'll go quickly through this, but I really wanted to include this so you can look at it at your leisure. But this is really kind of the breakdown of what ninth grade looked like last year. So I've broken it into quantitative and qualitative information for you. But we had 718 ninth graders that were in our BAR program last year. And you'll see that we had 687 specific conversations about students. Now, at a high school, this is not terribly common for teachers to be able to have time in their schedule in their day to be able to meet about a kid. We talk a lot about content and curriculum and things that are really important. But to be able to designate almost 700 conversations about your son, your daughter, your child, your student. That's really powerful. We talked about 64% of our students, that's a goal of ours for this year is to be higher than that. And over 160 hours of time of white bear staff members was sent strictly to problem solving. Qualitatively, we know that students pass their BAR classes at a higher rate than any other class. And that ninth grade students are being seen and known by staff at a far more significant way before. And ninth grade has a much higher pass rate than we've had in many, many years. So I'm quite proud of the work that we've done. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, but it really is worthwhile. I'm really quite proud of our team at North Campus about it. So where does that lead us as far as the district? So North Campus piloted, I put a little timeline together in 2020, we started this right in the beginning of the pandemic when we were part virtual, part in person. And it really helped us be able to have a bridge for helping our students. In 2021, you'll see that join. And Lake Ayers and Vadniss Elementary joined as well. Fast forward to this year, Willow Elementary has joined. And you can see that in 2023, we have just some amazing future opportunities. So this is something that is really growing in our district. It is worthwhile, it's, there's a lot of energy and momentum and excitement about it. And with that, some fun information for you. And you can mostly focus on that bottom number there. But you'll see that in the high school, this year we have 739th graders that are all having benefited from these type of bar conversations. Both middle schools are doing it in all their grade levels, six through eight. And you can see the number of students that benefit from it. And then elementary, Lake Ayers, Vadniss and Willow are all doing it at all levels as well. So total 3,745 students in our system are benefiting from essentially building assets. And also organizing ourselves to be able to reduce risks in a fast and timely manner. So some excitements for you to close out. A little bit hard to see with that orange in the room. But White Bear Lake has become the second district nationally to have BAR K through 12. That's a very, very exciting thing. Not only are we the second one, but we're significantly, we're one of the larger districts to do it. So that's something that we should be really excited about. That's three elementary schools, two middle school and one high school, obviously, as I shared earlier. At the last year, after a two-year hiatus because of the pandemic. The BAR Center put together their conference and we were able to send 22 staff members down to the conference. We were able to gain a lot of cool excitement. We were also able to make some amazing professional connections. We have teachers now that are still talking with teachers in other schools in other states to be able to collaborate together. Schools who are in BAR are very generous. We share a lot of information, we share a lot of data with each other. It's a really neat way to be able to work together. And we were asked to be a key school featured in this next year's conference. We're asked to lead one of the, one of the seminars. So that's a neat thing for our, for our district. White Bear was featured last year in a couple of ways. First was, I was asked to testify to a joint session of the Minnesota Legislature about BAR and I was able to really brag about the amazing work that our school is doing. And that was a really neat experience, something that I was really proud of to talk about. One of the largest education podcasts in America right now is called Most Likely to Change the World. Sponsored partially with BAR and it's kind of fun because the very first episode of that new podcast, and it is kind of going off the charts right now. White Bear Lake was actually featured in it. So if you can go, I included the link on there, but kind of a nice way for our, our school and our district to be highlighted. And then as I said, we're going to be featured in the next conference. They want to come and fly out a whole team of producers to do a big video special on BAR K through 12 in our system and what that means. And then lastly, we have been putting together all the coordinators. The key people that really drive this whole ship, that make this all run are the BAR coordinators. I was honored to be able to be the BAR coordinator at North Campus the last two years before my current role. But the coordinators are the ones that really put the, the time and energy to make this happen. We meet quarterly, so we've had everybody get together and that's really a chance for us to say vertically here in White Bear Lake. What do we do and what makes us achieve at a high rate? So it's a really, it's a neat group of people, there's a lot of energy and excitement. And our biggest takeaway is to close out is we need to remember to see students as whole students. Understanding that bear learning and relationships matter the most. Frequent, intentional and accountable conversations about strengths of students is key to the success. And really I just wanted to celebrate with all of y'all. It's a really cool thing and I'm really proud of it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you do have any. Otherwise you know where to find me. Repeat the question for sure. It is, I think we've had of, so the BAR efficiency threshold is they say that 50% of your students should be in a BAR team in order to be considered what's infidelity. And shout out to Principal Herrmann at our school, but he was able to get about 96% of our ninth graders to be scheduled into our teams. And it is, it takes a tremendous amount of effort. Every student needs to be hand-scheduled into be able to make it work. And so it does, the benefit outweighs the complications, but being able to say, you know, Joe needs to change his math class isn't quite as easy because they're on a BAR team now and we've structured their schedule that way. Yep. Yeah, that's a great, that's a great, the question was if you have multiple conversations about one student, is that tallied into the amount of conversations? Absolutely. There's some kids that we talk about one time and we were able to find one thing and we were able to move on. And other kids we talk about 15 times over the course of a year because the interventions we try aren't seeming to work. And so we want to keep doing what we can. I would add, some of the conversations are also not just academic, but a lot of them are social and emotional that we noticed. So we've had a student that a teacher said, has anybody noticed that they've totally changed their friend group in the last, over the weekend? Has anybody else seen that? And somebody says, yeah, you know, they don't, they used to be really talkative and now they're not. And somebody will call their family on behalf of the team and find out that some major things have happened in their family life. And one thing leads to another and we're able to help them gain some of those supports socially. To, you know, maybe there's a death in the family and things like that. So it really is streamlining quick communication. Yeah, great question. The question is, when do the teachers meet? That's the million dollar question. So teachers, we schedule all of our teams to have a common prep hour. So all the people on a green team would have a common third hour that they could meet. We offer to the teams that if they self-select, they can meet during that prep time during the week. The alternative is they would be meeting before, you know, in the contract hours, but before the school day begins. And I would say most of our teams prefer to meet in their common prep time. But that is, but that's not the case, you know, across the board and it really is what the teachers are most comfortable with. Yeah, oh, thank you. Yep. Yep. The question is what BAR classes are. And yes, it's the, it's really the core content courses, so social studies, language arts and science. Yeah, the question is, is this something that we could expand if it's so successful? Why don't we do it? Grades 10 through 12. And we have, we've had many conversations about how to take the principles and the concepts of things that have worked and expand it. The, I think the biggest barrier is scheduling. Because if you schedule ninth graders specific to this, and the research, the reason why BAR is ninth grade is because national average, national data suggests that ninth grade is crucial, there's direct correlation. If you bomb your ninth grade year, it's very difficult, you're already and so we've talked about it at length. It's something that we talk a lot about with the new studios that we're looking at in the new high school of how we can collaborate with our teams that way. And it's kind of a to be determined still. And I think we've been stuck with our two campuses, it's made it hard to be able to do that, but it's definitely something we're hopeful about. Yeah, that's a great question. So the question is, does the data reflect in discipline data and things like that? And we do have two years where it feels like outlier data with the pandemic and so that does impact it. So I think much of that is something we're still working on to identify. But I would say anecdotally, we have significantly less referrals for low-level concerns, things like truancy, things like acting out in class. And a huge part of that is teachers see students more as, as whole students. And there's, I would say there's more empathy, there's more, and students feel connected to staff. Because when staff are doing lessons, they're often doing it with the kids. And so they're sharing their own experiences and that does wonders for kids to feel part of a community in a classroom. So we have a lot less, you know, this kid was two minutes late, I'm writing a referral for them. There's a lot more, how do we problem solve this as opposed to this is a problem?
BAR has the greatest impact on credit attainment and reducing chronic absenteeism. They also, and they've gone, BAR is the most researched intervention in education. And that's not, that's from the American Institute of Research. And so I was just looking at their most recent research report, which is an I3 grant, an innovation grant. And they have another like six years of grants. So that is the greatest impact that they have. They also have impact on reducing disciplinary referrals, closing gaps, helping grades. The most significant impact that they have is helping students obtain credits in ninth grade and reducing chronic absenteeism. Which those are two predictors for students not graduating on time, students not having success in other areas. And so people sometimes are critical about schools having absenteeism or attendance rates as a goal, thinking that's kind of a low, a low level goal. But that really is a kind of the entry point to all the other goals that we have. So do we see that data reflected in our ninth graders' past years then?
Who, mostly in part, again, having a few years of outliers, maybe a year in there where there was pass fail. We had a year in there where we incorporated highs and then GPs and stuff like that. But, you know, we're the third year implementation of the high school. And so I think we'll see that graduation, you know, next year, I think we'll see a lot more when it comes to how they act in true graduation rate. But certainly the discipline. And I would say that the ninth grade has had a higher pass rate than we've had in many years.
What is the pass rate?
He had last year, I think the pass rate for incorporated was eight percent.
Much higher than when I lived there? What's it been previous? We have to get it for you, we can't, I don't want to, because they'll call us outside of this meeting and then we'll be called. So we'll have to get it for you to get the exact. Thank you.
One more question, kids that are in the other kind of interventions, maybe the whole intervention, but four. Are still considered to be a part of this?
Manager, they'll help that student out and more of, these are our students, let's bring in these case managers, let's bring in the parents, let's bring in people who can help us as a team as opposed to, you know, trying to avoid just hero teaching.
Thank you for, is we're able to implement BAR because of many grants that we've received. BAR has helped us, but we received Anderson Foundation grants. We were able to send as many people last year. We paid for, I think, four or five people out of our district professional development. All of those were funded through our Gates Foundation grant, Anderson Foundation. And so we're really grateful for the continued support of organizations as we lean into implementing this intervention. So just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you very much. We will move into Special MVP two. Update on the video transition at White Bear Lake.
I wouldn't mind the podium.
I think we'll get better sound.
Okay. Hey, it feels so formal. Are you okay? Can you hear that okay? All right, are we good? Test, 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 more microphone. All right, test, test, test. We're good, okay. I was gonna pull out the cowbell. But Joe already had you buckle in, so you're ready to go. At, Dr. Kaczmarek, I already explained at a previous board meeting that we'd be unveiling the transition plan as we move from our current North Campus into the addition. So remember that in September of 2024 is when we will unify the high school at the current North Campus site. At that time, we'll quit using the word North Campus and South Campus, which will be a big change for many of us. But it'll be a new era in White Bear Lake High School. Until then, we have a lot more construction ahead of us, but it's going really well. And soon the North Campus students, all 1,300 of them and the 150 or so staff members will transition to the new three-story classroom addition, as well as the field house and some of the outdoor athletic areas that are already. So we have with us tonight, Joe Held, again, who's gonna walk us through the plans they have at North Campus for the transition. This is just gonna be a high-level overview and they'll be back in December, at the December meeting, give us more details on it. So turn it over to you, Joe.
That's good. Part two. Angela Nelson, Principal Nelson of North Campus was hoping to do this presentation. She's unfortunately unable to make it, so that's why I'm here still. So I'm excited though to be able to share really where we're going. This will be pretty brief because you're going to get a lot more information very soon with more concrete. But this is really a, you know, here's where we're headed. So the three things we're gonna look at is transition dates. We're gonna look at the transition activities that we have planned for students, staff and families and community. And then really the next steps. So pretty simple, pretty straightforward, but that's where we're headed. So let's start with the transition dates. January 20th is going to be the end of quarter two. And therefore the end of semester one at North Campus. So what we've done is we've adjusted the end of the semester by about three days. The point being that when we're moving into a new space, we didn't want to do it with three days remaining in a semester, we didn't want to move and then suddenly all the students have to take a final exam in a new building. Where, you know, we're hoping everything works out and teachers are still trying to find the bathrooms, things like that. The idea being let's do it at a real natural breaking point. So we moved the transition up a little bit so that we have that January 20th is going to be kind of the end of that semester. So therefore, what does that mean? The next year, January, or excuse me, the next week, January 23rd to the 27th is our week of transition. So what that looks like is within that week, we have one full workday because we had the end of the semester. So we have one full So what that looks like is within that week, we have one full work day because we had the end of the semester. So we have one full work day. We're going to have one full professional development day and then three days within that time that's going to be for moving. So that's everything from moving boxes to exploring the new space, to getting settled in, to working in these new learning spaces, uh, with your new team. Monday through Wednesday are additional non-student days for North Campus only, as I mentioned. Thursday and Friday will remain non-student days for K through 12 students. So just a minute difference between North Campus and the rest of the district for this. January 30th is when students will return. So if you're looking for a date to highlight and star and put a little smiley face next to it. January 3rd is going to be the day that we start our second semester in our new building. So how are we going to get there? That's the good question. Seth, transitions. So throughout this semester and really the end of last semester, but into this year, staff have been going on tours with Principal Herrmann, as well as the architects and the engineers and the construction workers. To be able to kind of consistently walk through to see where things are going to be, to get a feel for what the spaces will look like, feel like. We are also working with our teams, our CIT, our collaborative inquiry teams, to be able to kind of continually focus on what is learning going to look like in these new spaces. And then, um, staff at all levels, K, or excuse me, nine through 12, so not just North Campus specifically, but nine through 12 are working with Dr. Dylan to be working on creating new norms, uh, new procedures, new expectations for what the new space will look like. If you, the best way to describe it is you're moving into a new, you know, condo living and you've got all new neighbors, people that maybe you haven't taught next to before. And so just how do you have those working relationships together? Technology and training are happening right now as well as getting ready for the new space. Our technology department is doing an amazing job. They've quite the, quite the mount in front of them with being able to transition stu-, uh, staff's computers, their phones. So that when you go to the new space, it's your exact phone, your exact computer. If you just think of the logistics that takes to just do that alone, it's pretty mind boggling. So they're working really hard to be able to get that ready for us. And then we're putting together a volunteer teacher group to start working on what the transition activities might look like. So you're going to see a common theme here is that we're putting together a teacher team and they're really going to be the driving force with what the transition are, is going to look like. So they're going to work in partnership with administration, but really it's, they know what their needs are. It's a chance for them to ask questions. It's a chance for them to brainstorm, to collaborate. So we really want to rely heavily on the teachers to be able to express and drive the, here's what we should do as a group. So that group just started meeting a little bit ago and we're going to continuously move as we get closer to that date. So that's the staff side of things. The students, um, similarly, we realize that the actually is going to look like on the inside. It's like buying a house and not knowing what the inside layout is going to look like, expecting open floor plan and it's not. So, um, staff, or excuse me, students are very excited, uh, and they're also a little bit anxious. It's unknown to them, right? So this is really intentional about how do we help students to feel prepared, excited and ready to be successful. So December 1st, which is coming up in just a few days, students are going to be having assemblies during lunch where we're going to be doing presentations to every kid in the school. And we're going to be partnering with the world architects. So we're going to have a panel and a question and answer time. So a chance for the students to be able to get their questions out, to be able to hear from the designers themselves of why things are designed the way they are. Um, and then you'll see that third bullet point, uh, survey is going to go out to our students on December 1st, where they can also select to be part of a planning committee. Cause the student voice matters a great deal to us. And so they're going to have a chance to have some leadership and being able to talk about what students are going to need as we go into this new space. So, um, again, like I said, a common theme, we have staff that have a chance to be able to have their voices input in there. Students, we're going to rely on quite a bit to make sure that they can share what their, you know, fears, concerns, excitements, joys, questions are. And then we get to January 17th and that's going to be the, the closing activities. We're going to, you know, closing up your lockers, clean out anything else. And again, that's going to be very, uh, driven by that student committee as well as the teacher committee. And then the week of January 30th, we're going to start having activities oriented for the new space, a similar concept designed by these students and teachers. And then to be determined, so you'll hear more about it later, but we're going to have an open house with the new spaces for, um, parents, families, students to be able to come in, to be able to, to walk around. So more information on that later. So then lastly, we have family and community because we want to make sure this is something that is part of, you know, the fabric of our community. So December 1st, uh, in addition to having that student assemblies, we're also going to have informational events at North Campus in the evening for families to be able to attend where we'll have same kind of concept with question and answer panels, world architects will be there. Very similar to what we'll do with the students, but a chance for parents and family, community members to be there. We're putting together, the week of January 9th, we're putting together some drone footage to be able to do a walkthrough with, um, renderings of the space. So there was an amazing one that was done with North Star Elementary. If you got a chance to see that. It really does a cool job of feeling like you're kind of flying through the building. So you can get an idea of, oh, that's what that hallway looks like. And if I turn left, that's what that looks like. And so really trying to make it so that the anxiety and stress of a new thing is not so, uh, unknown. But to be able to make people feel welcome. January 18th, I, I'm personally very excited about this. We're going to do a walk through the circles one last time. The circles of North Campus is quite a, a bulwark of our institution and something that I think every graduation in history I've been at has referenced the circles of North Campus. And so our school is partnering with the new, uh, history club, which is also tied or partnered with the historical society in White Bear Lake. And they're putting together some really cool displays that are going to be put in the hallways of history of the school, history of the campus, history of the community. And really open it up. So people, if they want to, before we close the door to what North Campus used to look like, um, be able to walk the circles one last time. And, and I'll, you know, it's funny, as I was looking over this presentation, just on a personal note, I, I was getting a little emotional because I met my wife in the North Campus circles and realizing that for me, this was one of those things of, wow, it's not going to look the way that I have this precious memory. And so it's exciting, but I think it's going to be a cool moment for our community to do that. Open house, as I said, with the new spaces to be determined. Those are things that we're still working on. So to finalize here, our next steps, creation of student and family community, uh, committees. And then the committee work to plan on transition activities. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Held. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. This is really exciting. We will, to, or, yeah, you weren't kidding. Going it out. Our last discussion item B3, Strategic Emergence Plan update, Ms. Babish.
All right. Good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kaczmarek, Ms. Collier. Thanks for being here tonight. Um, I'm excited to provide you with an update of the strategic plan. And, um, as you may remember, we have four bold resolutions that we called strategies that aligned to our district mission that were approved, uh, at that August 8th school board meeting. So I'm going to zoom in a little bit. These four strategies to remind us were done, um, by the work of a team this past summer. And there are about 30 members of that team that worked on the four strategies. So the four strategies are, we will create and sustain a safe, equitable nurturing environment. We will promote and encourage students' personal learning experiences and aspirations. We will ensure our, our organization continuously transforms to fulfill our mission. And we will establish healthy and vital engagement with our entire community. I do want to take a moment to recognize the strategic planning team that developed these strategies. This team consists of community members, parents, principals, staff, teacher, union president, school board member and district leadership. So thanks again. I know many of you were involved and, um, just really important work. And we really appreciate the support and input, input that you had. Now, following the approval of the four strategies on August 8th, we reached out to the school community about another opportunity to get involved in the strategic planning process, to develop an action plan for each strategy. We had four action teams, one for each strategy and a fifth group that came together to research and develop ideas for foundations of success for a White Bear Lake area school graduates. You can see the action team leaders have asterisks next to their name. I see one in our audience tonight. And I just want to, um, reiterate the gratefulness and, um, we're just so thankful for community members and for our action team leaders to, um, bring our community and school community together to, to work on this. So, um, they were, this team, the action teams were involved in working on developing specific results over these last two months, so September and October. So just to recap, um, updates are, um, the, to present the specific results for each strategy from the action teams for feedback and approval. And then also the creation of that fifth team that's gathering feedback on the criteria for foundations for success. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about the action team process, and I know many of you were part of that as well. So thank you for your input and, um, for your time. The action teams really were to look at the strategies and to accept them as written. Um, and really making a commitment to, to make, um, the strategies a reality. And so they deserve, or they served as a design team and were expected, they weren't expected to implement the plan, but to design specific results around an action plan. So the goal, as I mentioned, to create specific results describing how the strategy will really become a part of daily operations. So that was really the goal. The guidelines of the action team called for total agreement, um, not majority rule, not a vote or consensus. Everyone needed to, um, gain something from the experience. Everyone committed to the guidelines. Participants dedicated, um, to the cause that transcends themselves. So, um, really important work and exhaustive work, right? But really worth it. The action teams, what they did was they analyzed the strategy, really made meaning of it, did a lot of research on developing, you know, what, what, what can we do to fulfill this strategy and really make it come to life? And so they narrowed down over multiple meetings, narrowed down to action and wrote specific results. They also did a cost benefit analysis and then presented these specific results back to the planning team, the strategic planning team on November 2nd. So, and that's what I have for you tonight is to look at those specific results from each of the strategies. And so the first strategy, we will create and sustain a safe, equitable and nurturing environment. I'm going to give you a moment to read through these and maybe because this is recorded, I will read through them. So the first stra-, uh, specific result for strategy one, ensure the physical, social, mental and chemical health and wellness of each person. Number two, ensure ongoing intentional and personalized professional development that continuously improves the student educational experience. Number three, create a culture and climate that cultivates a sense of safety, a sense of belonging and the freedom to be your authentic self. Number four, ensure each student meets their full potential by engaging with all families and the broader community. And the fifth result, prioritize communication with all families and provide easily accessible and relevant resources to help each student thrive. So as we look back at the strategy, some things that probably stand out to you, that really stand out to me is really identifying each, each person, each student, really taking a student centered approach. Also really recognizing the professional learning of our staff and the adults in the building. And then also creating that culture and climate of safety. And then finally, looking at communication and really working with the broader community. Strategy two, we will promote and encourage students' personal learning experiences and aspirations. So the first specific result, create an evolving student centered experience with multiple opportunities. Number two, designate a meaningful amount of time and resources for students and staff to pursue individual learning. Number three. Learning experiences and aspirations. Number four, provide staff with intentional time and resources for professional development, collaboration and implementation. And then finally, implement a system of evaluation to ensure students' personal learning experiences are optimized, have a positive impact on student engagement and growth. And I do want to mention, we did have a student representative on this action team. Strategy three, we will ensure our organization continuously transforms to fulfill our mission. Specific result number one, ensure responsive professional development that meets the needs of individuals, groups and the organization as a whole and aligns with the organizational mission and strategic plan. Number two, foster and support experimentation and reflection based in research and best practices. Number three, designate time and resources to prioritize collaboration and team learning. Number four, facilitate intentional two-way communication among individuals and groups across organization and community. Number five, ensure data and feedback on all aspects of the mission are routinely collected and acted on in a public and transparent manner. Number six, examine, challenge, corroborate and transform current processes to ensure alignment with the mission and strategic plan. And finally, ensure working groups and committees have a stated purpose that aligns with the mission and strategic plan. So really with the specific results, um, for this one, really aligning it back to the district's mission and strategic plan. And finally, strategy four, we will establish healthy and vital engagement with our entire community. Specific result number one, ensure communication processes and procedures are easily accessible, streamlined and concise. Number two, ensure a comprehensive service learning program through which students learn and develop through active participation that meets the needs of the community. Number three, foster organizational relationships in the community that are mutually beneficial, encompass experiential learning and are regularly assessed for success by a community advisory council. And finally, establish a structured community volunteer program that includes defined roles and a streamlined process for those interested in participation, in participating, excuse me. So really again, this partnership with our entire community. So I'm going to pause. I know many of you were part of these action team groups, but if you have any questions or comments.
Any questions for Ms. Babish? Uh, Mr. Fogi.
Wanted clarification on an action team. Foundations of success team, you might have already said this. What's the role of that group?
Yep. Yep. So Dr. Gillespie was, um, helped lead that group, um, with Bill Maher, one of our community members. So I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that.
We, maybe it's one of those, that we could call it a portrait of a graduate. Definitely really clear skills and attributes that we want students to graduate with.
And so instead of calling it a portrait of a graduate, our team is calling it foundations of success. And so right now we're in the phase where we're collecting feedback around a draft. And so that, we're really in the beginning stages of that. So you, you will be part of the groups that you'll see it go around to parents and community members will have something on the website. But that'll be finalized and brought to the board. Our goal is in February or March, but we're not going to rush it because we want to make sure we get feedback from our community. And then the final round of feedback will be from students for the final draft. But if you Google portrait of a graduate, it'll give you lots of examples from other districts. We just wanted to call it something different. Yep.
How hard, um, I believe some of the work that the committees did and the groups did. They worked so hard and they, every, 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 I think, participated and came together.
Second.
I would, second. I would second the things that Kathleen just said and also say that the community members and the student that was a part of the group that I participated in really struggled to make sure that everything that was created would be understood by families, students, that there weren't too many buzzwords, that it was obvious, and they definitely helped. To know.
Great. Thank you. That everyone who, so much time into this work, the process was really efficient and smooth and it worked. It worked. So.
Uh, comment on this. So, um, this will come before the board in December for, um, for approval. So, um, if you have questions between now and then, please reach out. Um, otherwise you'll see in December. So what you'll be acting on is the, you know, what, um, Ms. Babish just went through and, um, the specific results. So. And then that will drive our work for the next, you know, handful of years. So very excited about, about the work that's been done in the last few years. And we're, we're excited about the work that's yet to be done. And this will drive that. That'll, that'll be our priority as we, as we move forward. So.
Great. Uh, Ms. Thompson. Okay, great. Thank you. And with that, uh, those are our discussion items. So I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Dr. Arcand at second. A second by Ms. Daniels. For adjournment, please say aye.
Same sign. And we are adjourned.